It's a meeting of the Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council of North Branford, Connecticut, Tuesday, October 6th at, it looks like 7:10. I want to start with a salute to the flag. Haven't been here for a couple of weeks, I'm forgetting what I have to do.
It's a little dark up here.
Yeah, it is. It is, I can't.
Yeah, we lost one right there.
But is it on dimmer?
Yeah, the new technician, he wanted to get for the cameras better.
Oh, okay.
If I say something wrong, let me know. Michelle, can you hear the roll call, please? I'm going to abstain.
No, this is roll call if you're here.
Oh, oh, here, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm here.
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 Okay.
In the minutes of the previous meeting, September 15, 2020, WPCA and Town Council.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Angeloni, second by Council Diamond. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
That's me.
That's you. Abstained from this one.
Told you, I haven't been here in a while. Okay, next is Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Correspondence and citizen statements. Nothing. Unfinished business, I believe we have none. New business, none. And citizen statements and petitions, nothing. All right, we're going to the regular Town Council meeting. Reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Economic Development Commission, Roger Salloway, monthly report.
Yeah, his report is in the packet. There was a meeting last night. They discussed a number of issues, but a lot of it was focused on the discussion with one of their consultants that they worked with, Lauren, and talked about marketing. So there was a lot of discussion around marketing, discussion on potential design review committee through P&amp;Z that they talked about, as well as some other agenda items that they have on a regular basis, being real estate and development of 1599. So it was a rather good meeting, pretty robust meeting on marketing, and they're moving forward, talking about a spring event as well. So it was overall a good meeting.
Okay, you all set, Mike?
That's it, yes, thank you.
All right, next we have Parks and Rec.
I was unable to attend their September meeting, and I know they also had a special meeting last week in regards to field usage by the Connecticut Independent Football League, which they did approve to use the youth football field. So it's just, that league just has to have everything in place before they move forward in where that's going, so. And that would actually be for the high school, because the CIAC has ruled there's no fall football, and so some schools are joining an independent league, and they cannot play on the high school field, so they needed a field location. So there is a group from town that has, is getting everything together. I'm not sure where that stands, if they're moving forward, but Park and Rec, the commission did approve use of that field.
Okay, thank you, Rose. Next, Police Commission.
Police Commission, next meeting is October 13th, because of the holidays, it's on Tuesday.
I just want to say something. Last Friday, we had a police officer retire, actually retired Saturday, Dave Maduo, and I just wanted to wish him a lot of luck. He's a great guy, I've known him for a while, and we got a little party for him with some cake and stuff, and I just wanted to say congratulations. Okay, Fire Commission.
Nothing to report, there's a meeting this Thursday night.
Thank you, Ron. Next, we have Board of Education and Town Council Communications Subcommittee.
I have talked to the Chair of the Board of Ed to try and get a meeting scheduled, so we're, I believe Scott was supposed to get in touch with Mike to talk about some dates. Has he done that?
Yeah, I think, yeah, trying to look at the meeting on the 20th, the next Town Council meeting earlier, at a possible 6 o'clock potentially.
Okay.
Although I was hoping to hold out that same date for talking about maybe getting the finance subcommittee convened as well, but we can work after tonight, we can work on that, maybe a split, or maybe it's just a special meeting for one of those.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Next, we have North Branford Police Department Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee.
You forgot planning and zone. Gee.
Oh, okay. Next is planning and zone.
I didn't attend the meeting on Thursday.
Okay, thanks, Tommy. Next, we have North Branford Police Department Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee.
No meeting.
And next is Finance Subcommittee.
No meeting.
And next to the last, we have Ad hoc Design Review Committee.
The folks on the committee are here tonight, and they're going to talk about, they're going to present to the Town Council of frozen cons, the four different options for the high school. I think all members of the committee are here tonight, and that'll come up later, I present on the projects.
Okay, thanks, Maury. All right, we'll move into Town Manager's Report, update on COVID-19.
Yeah, so you have in the report the stats and the data coming out of East Shore District Health Department, obviously a little bit of fluctuation there with respect to our numbers over the last three weeks, nine positive cases with more pending in the system. As you know, I'll be on a call, I am on call every Thursday morning, and we'll have additional information regarding that, and the monitoring of those cases. Plenty of folks in quarantine, but these nine obviously are in isolation because they're positive, so we continue to monitor the situation and look at not just, you know, where we are, but where we are within the context of the health district, and, you know, Branford and East Haven and towns around us, and obviously in the state. There's also the state, not only the East Shore cases, but where we are, but I think I did also include some state numbers. That's also, comes off the governor's website, and travel ban that comes out every Tuesday, so we'll continue to monitor that. I know we've had a pretty flat line, and this is a little bit of a blip, so it's a bit concerning, but it's really not alarming in any way, it's just monitoring, so that's what we're going to continue to do.
So those nine, that, the, in the last three weeks, does that include the ones from the high school?
Yes, I believe it does, yeah.
Okay, so if a teacher or support staff that works in the district, but if they don't live in the district, does it still count against our numbers, or the town that they live in?
I believe, and I can confirm this, but the town they live in.
Okay.
And so there's, there's always, Mike has explained it to me, sometimes they have to reconcile when they get state numbers, as you can imagine, nursing homes and origin and so forth, so, but yes, my understanding is residency.
Okay.
And so there is, so you know, the contract tracing going on through East Shore Health Department, you know, nothing but, you know, collaborative effort there to do what they need to get done, in terms of communication from the Board of Education side, the school side, and administrative side, effectively, you know, communicating and getting that stuff done, so it's a process they need to do, and they're getting it done.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Sure.
Next is update on storm cleanup.
Yeah, you know, again, I put a memo in there, just a quick update, that it's just a great effort all around Public Works Department, Police, Fire, in terms of the response to topple the storm and tornado back-to-back. Lot of cleanup effort there, and as you can see, and you drive by, you see the pile out there, almost an acre in size, you know, we held that open to the end of the month and allowing residents to do that, so there's going to be, you'll be hearing from Fran at some point, where, you know, there's going to be a cost involved with that debris, and so we're working, working through those numbers. But again, I just wanted to emphasize the massive cleanup effort, and coordination was really well done. So we're, you know, I'm sure people still in cleanup mode for some, for some folks, and again, who knows how long the seasonal go, what happened, and, but, you know, again, tough to get hit back-to-back like that, so, kind of, it kind of impacts in a great deal, in a great way, the budget, what we are working through, the reimbursement process through FEMA and state, so Anthony and Jim Buck and the rest are doing what we need to do to put all that paperwork forward.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Fran, you did a great job, you and your guys. Thank you all.
That's it, yeah, so cleanup, yeah, that's it. And then the other item to see is the financial policy procedure manual, I forget which member had requested or asked about it, but that's in there for your review note, nothing that I wanted to speak on, just that putting it in there, and it's a lot to digest, but it exists, it's here, it's for your review. It's more of a point of information.
Okay. Thank you. Next, Community Events and Presentations.
Nothing, nothing scheduled.
Okay. Next, we have Citizen Statements and Petitions and Correspondence.
I don't know how you do this, it's been so long since I've been here, I don't think I've, well, anyway, hope you can hear me. Let me start by saying I love this town, but I've been very discouraged watching the last couple of meetings. I think a lot of valuable Town Council time has been wasted. It's not a personal attack on anybody, but some of the question, and Ron, you were the victim of my comments, you dug up stuff that if you'd been here in this council chambers, you would have realized it had already been hashed out years ago. You've got so many resources here, you've got this statesman, I think he unlocked a door to the town. I think he unlocked a gate to the town. You've got, Mike's been here, his family's been here, Rose has been here, there's so much valuable, and to spend so many hours hashing over so many figures that could have been done in a conference room without being on public TV, causing so much lost time. We've got bigger fish to fry than that. We've got an ambulance situation that pretty soon you're going to have a horse and buggy taking people to the hospital if we don't get on it. There's so much more important stuff this town needs to do, and you spent hours on this, and there was no need for it. I mean, you're all volunteers, you've all been here a while, but I just get very nervous when the elections come and a person shows up that hasn't been sitting back there with me, maybe catching a good nap like I do. And you've got to start really moving forward again. We're losing time, we don't know what the next administration's going to do to us, so we've really got to be using these council minutes in the proper way. I mentioned it before, double agendas. It was a problem with a couple of past councils, the official agenda, and then there's the personal one, and when they block each other, it's nothing but headaches. And it's not productive, like I say, I love this town, I like all the people that are in this town, I wouldn't live anywhere else but this town, but when I see problems and time wasted, I have to speak up. And like I say, that's why I'm here tonight, not a personal attack, it's an effort to get the town to move forward. Anthony, you're going to talk about him tonight, he doesn't, he didn't ask me to say anything, but Anthony has been a very important part just to me. I have a son with special needs, he's now in the fire department. You know how we got there? That gentleman's time. It wasn't $40 an hour, it was priceless. He got Danny a useful spot on the fire department. He's got a life now. I don't, I didn't join the fire department because I stayed out of his way. When I became the Agriculture Commission Chairman, ducked out of water, I was a phone guy. Advice, financial advice, day or night, his workday does not stop. Hey, Anthony, I got a meeting coming up, how the heck do we do this? Anthony, how do we do that? Between him and Carol Zeb, we kind of get off the ground, and with Mike's agriculture expertise, we had something good going there for a long time. But we, I realized that you ask the people that know what you need to know, you don't try to fake it, you don't dig, you go right to them for help right away. If I need something from Anthony even now, because I got this bogus title, I'm Agriculture Commission Events Coordinator, he will tell me how to finance something when I have to get supplies for the attractables, which we haven't been able to have and stuff. He's a valuable asset. My son was in a moped accident after his regular work hours. Guess who was the first one on the scene at that accident? Anthony, calming my son down and taking good, providing good medical care, another hat he wears. He's a friend, he's a fire chief, he's a medical technician, he was a frustrated fireman one time because they were trying to extrate a girl that was seriously injured in one of the newer cars. The hearse tool in town wasn't strong enough. Anthony, as a fire representative, made you guys aware, this tool is useless to us, the one we got. We've got to get these new car hearse tools that will move these pillars. So he's a source of valuable information, he never sleeps, he's like the Ever Redder Bunny, you can call him day or night, he's not a union guy, like, it's not my job, he just does what's good for the town. To see him get beat up bad like that, that wasn't, that wasn't pleasant to watch. I think you've got to realize what you've got. Under this whole roof, you've got good employees. They rally when there's a problem. When Lisa Valenti's got a problem, the other clerks don't say, "It's not my job," they jump in. You've got something other towns will never have. Don't waste it, don't, don't try to force it to operate under such tight guidelines that they can't do what they need to do. They're here, they've got longevity, trust them. They know what they're doing, and they'll go beyond what they know what they're doing, and they'll make it work. So learn what you've got, if you're new to the council, learn from your older members, and I use that just as seniority, but go with what you've got, go to these sources, forget the party lines, and ask questions. But don't waste valuable Town Council minutes reinventing the wheels that were invented four times already, and they work now, and now you're trying to just tweak them again, you're going to throw the whole train off the track. So I'm off my soapbox, thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Frank Brigano, I'm going to take this off, is that all right?
Yeah.
In my pocket. I'm Frank Brigano, I live at 23 Montgomery Drive in Northford. I am here tonight to ask the Town Council to turn down a request to build a cell tower behind Totucket Valley Elementary School and adjacent to residential housing. Here are my reasons for rejecting the tower. Number one, the tower access will be from behind the school, thus there is perceived safety hazard, not only during the construction of the tower, but also to operate and maintain it. The tower access will abut the children's recreational area. There is also the issue of power and communication cabling to the tower. In the woods, there is a recreational area that is roped off and used by students, I believe scouts, for wilderness training that will be lost. This project will have significant impact on the forest, animals, birds, et cetera. This loss of habitat is irreplaceable and a huge loss. We know from our proximity to the forest, it is habitated by piliated woodpeckers, owls, bats, box turtles, hummingbirds, deer, and more. Are not these animals important? Regarding the health aspects of having a cell tower located overhead of residences or a school, there are conflicting data. Many scientific researchers point out that the FCC regulations are out of date, as they were promulgated in 1996, and since then, the radio frequencies used and means of transmission have significantly changed. With 5G coming onboard, there is even more unknown. Physicians and scientific researchers are concerned that there have not been sufficient research studies conducted on the health effects of radio transmissions from cell towers. Recently published scholarly, this is not just Google searched, scholarly articles from peer-reviewed journals elucidate the risks to children radiated from cell towers located in proximity of schools. Regarding the young students at Totucket Valley Elementary, are you willing to impair their cognitive abilities? A peer-reviewed controlled study published in 2018, that's two years ago, of 217 students aged 13 through 16 from two schools showed that exposure to radio frequency electromagnetic field radiation from mobile phone base station towers was associated with delayed fine and gross motor skills, spatial working memory, and attention in school. Do you want our Totucket Valley Elementary School students to be guinea pigs to prove this study wrong? An Israeli epidemiological study on cancer risks published in 2014 stated there was a significantly greater incidence of cancers of all kinds within vicinity of cell phone transmission systems, stations. Additionally, there is a group of physicians and scientists from prestigious U.S. universities that have organized and formed an advocacy group called Physicians for Safe Technology. This group of scholarly individuals caution on the installation of cell towers near schools and residents. In August 2020, August of this year, there was a publication by a researcher from Michigan Technological University, now if you're not familiar with that university, I am, because I'm in this field, they're like equivalent to RPI, suggests that widespread exposure to radio frequency radiation is the next tobacco, or asbestos, or Roundup, whatever you wanted, and suggests that cell tower owners will be subject to future liabilities as more epidemiological evidence on their dangers become available. You may not know this, but North Branford has eight cell towers. Do we not have sufficient coverage? I spoke to the owner of the cell towers on Parsonage Road and queried regarding the service at the Honeywell and Hockey Rink site, where we understand there is a service issue for the fire department. He assured me that there is more than sufficient coverage at that site. If this council believes there is not coverage, an auxiliary tower could be located on these properties to rectify the coverage. Further, a monopole dedicated to police and fire communications could be installed behind the new police facility, just as the town of North Haven did. If you go down to North Haven, you'll see they have a dedicated tower behind their police station. I have read that like some of you, we are members of the disposable generation. I am not ready to be disposed of, at least not yet, are you? There are so many unknown health risks associated with living underneath a cell tower. Please, let's not wait 20 years to determine the correctness of the science. The safety, health, and well-being of the students and the residents rests on your shoulders and with your consciences. I am asking you, tonight, please move this project away from the schools and residents, save the lives of your, of our residents, young and old, plus the lives of God's creatures that live in Totucket Valley Elementary School Forest. I've made a copy of this with my telephone number and email address for each of you. If you like copies of the scholarly articles I cite, I'd be happy to email them to you, but I did not want to waste a ton of paper on them, and if you want to talk to me about it, I'd be more than happy to talk to you about it, I know I've talked to some of you about it. I have a meeting scheduled Friday at 1 o'clock with the Superintendent of Schools about this again. One of the things that I find is, is just unconscionable, is the fact that the school board will not reach out to the parents of Totucket Valley schools to tell them about the fact that they're going to put a cell tower behind them. I think once the parents know that they're going to put a cell tower behind that school, they will be up in arms.
Thanks, Maury.
About this. So I, please, I'm asking you. Michelle, if you could please put this in the record, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I got the next one, Michelle.
Thank you, everybody.
I might get one. Thanks, Frank.
You're welcome.
Yes.
My name's Bob Constantinople, I live at 85 West Pond Road. The reason I'm here tonight is, back on September 8th, I wrote a note to the Town Council and to the Town Manager on something that I wanted the Town Council to know about. To best of my knowledge, you people have not received that note yet. I'm here to find out why. That's a very simple question, why didn't, why do you people not have this letter that I sent in? Is there anybody going to give me an answer, or?
I don't know.
What it's about, I certainly will let you know what it's about.
You sent it to the Town Manager?
Because it's hard to hear you best, family.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's a mask, Bob, there's nothing you can do about it.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. I didn't hear what you asked of what you received.
Oh, I've sent a letter, I made a letter out on September, it was actually a note on September 8th, and I wanted to notify the Town Council about something. And I mailed it, care of the Town Manager, for him and the Town Council, and to the best of my knowledge, so far, you people haven't received it. I want to know where it is, that's all I want to know. Why can't resident of the town give information to the Town Council?
No, we want that. Mike, do you have anything?
I, I misplace, I don't have, I can't locate it, and I explained that to Mr. Constantinople tonight.
Okay.
You know, it is an internal matter I wanted to review with, I mean, it's a great, it's a great story, I'm glad he's here, because it's an opportunity to say thank you and to showcase what Tom Hogan, in this case, in terms of the CEO, did in this case, but I think he can tell his story, but, you know, I did apologize, and I put it aside to, because Tom, Tom isn't here all, every day, and wanted to talk to Carrie as well about, because I didn't really have a firm, the details of what he did, so I.
I don't, I don't know anything about it.
All right, nobody here knows about it, because the letter never, never, well.
Could you tell us?
Yes, certainly would. I had a problem, and I went to the town for help, and I got, you know what, why don't I just read what I sent in? Be a lot easier. It was addressed to Mike Paulus and the Town Council, it was dated September 8th, 2020. I am writing about, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Now I can hear you.
I am writing about a problem I had and called the town for help. I have done this in the past 71 years, and the answer has always been the same, it's not a town problem. This time, I called our new enforcement officer, Tom Hogarty, I hope I'm pronouncing This time, I called our new enforcement officer, Tom Hogarty, I hope I'm pronouncing his name right. He told me the same thing, and then went out of his way to help me, and I mean out of his way. With his help, this problem is on the way to being solved. That's not true. The problem has been solved in the past month. He did not have to do this, but he did. He gave the official answer and then went to work for me. I want the council to know they have a good employee there. The rigmarole that I went through and he went through to solve a problem for me, you have to appreciate this. I have a residency that, it's a mysterious residency behind me. It's owned by an outfit in Phila, and that's a lie, again, it's supposedly owned by an outfit in Philadelphia, but it's actually owned by the state of Connecticut. It's the Housing Finance Authority, 999 West Street, Rocky Hill, Connecticut, 06067. They hold the mortgage on the place. They have, I imagine wards of the state living there. And they hold the mortgage, and the company that manages the place is out of Philadelphia. Well, you try and run this down, and there's a problem, you can't. I couldn't, I couldn't find out who even owned the property. He found out for me, got me the phone number, of course, with coronavirus, every time I called, they were working from home, there was nobody there. Eventually, with his help, I got ahold of the person, and they explained to me that they were the holder of the mortgage, and the people that manage it and had a talk to were in Philadelphia. So now we started all over again, trying to contact Philadelphia, which would never answer me. Fortunately, the person from the state of Connecticut had given me their cellphone number because there was a problem. And I contacted them again, and I said, this time was easy, and I said to them, they're not responding. So I'll have a text out, they'll respond to you today, and they did. Because they hold the mortgage on the place, I guess they wanted to listen. And still, they did not want to resolve the problem. And I, all I said to them was, they said they needed somebody of authority to verify everything I was saying. And I said, well, the town enforcement officer has seen it. You could talk to him, I don't know if he wants to take an official stand on it or not, but you could talk to him. They called the town, the town of North Branford, Tom, and he told them the story. Problem got solved. They sent an email to me and to Tom saying that they would take care of the problem, and since then, the problem has been taken care of. Now, this man did a lot of work, he's a part-time employee, I never met him before, and what impressed me was, he got out of the car, was very official, he says, look, I've researched it, this is not a town problem. And so I just talked to him, he left, never saying he was going to help me, next thing you know, an hour later, he was calling me with phone numbers, this information and that. This guy went out of his way. You've got a good employee there, it's about time we, well, it would make sure that we keep him, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good stuff, thank you.
I gotta.
Do you want, do you want a copy of this letter?
Yeah, sure. I gotta agree with you, I know, I know Tom for a while now, and this is not because I cut his hair. But he's a great guy, he's a fantastic guy.
I never met him before, and the first impression I got when he got out of the car was the same bullshit from the town.
Yeah.
It was exactly what I got.
He's not like that, he's not like that.
He, you know, he listened, looked, talked, an hour later, he was giving me advice. And believe me, he spent a lot of time helping me. And this is something that he wasn't, I guess he didn't have to do, let's put it that way.
No, he doesn't.
But he is very good.
He does a great job. Matter of fact, I have a friend that lives next door to this building, who had the same kind of problem, I believe, and Tom stepped in and he took care of the whole situation. And the guy, every time he sees me, he thanks me for what Tom did.
Oh, yes.
He's a good guy, and he's only part-time.
The same thing happened, this, believe me, I wouldn't, this would have never been resolved, this would have never been resolved.
I know, I know.
He, you know, he went well out of his way, and I just wanted to make sure he got the recognition. And it birthed me that a letter I sent to his council didn't get here. That's, that's what birthed me.
Sir, how do you feel about putting it in the Totucket Times? Why don't you put that in the Times, what you just told us? That'd be nice, because then the whole town would see it, if you wanted to.
Yeah, I'll gladly do it. I just honestly don't want to get in any trouble, if people get.
No, I think that'd be nice.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we can move on, if I can find where I was. Resignations and appointments, is that right? There's none. Next, we have number 12 is unfinished business, discussion and action. Discussion and action, Connecticut general statutes, number 8-24, referral for cell tower lease at TVES 1388 Middletown Avenue, table, it was tabled.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion relative to the cell tower, but before I do that, I would like to make some statements.
Sure, go ahead.
I would first of all like to thank the town council for your support on two occasions to table this particular project. I also want to reiterate that I think I'm a very strong advocate of public safety. But there's two kinds of public safety. There's emergency public safety, and there's a public safety of the well-being of the residents of a town, both the adults and the children. We are elected to preserve and protect the citizens of this town. So how did this tower thing happen so quickly? About six months ago or so, we as a council hired a consultant that was supposed to study the communication system in this town. We haven't even seen a preliminary report from this consultant, and all of a sudden, we have a cell tower going up in a residential area and near a school. No notice to the public, no notice to the town council. The town manager receives a letter on July 2nd from the tower company without notifying the town council. He proceeds to allow a company to survey the property, stake it, do a balloon test. Never came to the town council, this is public property. Why doesn't the town council have to say in that? Why were we kept in the dark for two months while the town manager felt he could do this? The town council gets notified on August 27th. The Board of Education gets notified on September 30th. Why all of a sudden, after three months, does the town, does the Board of Education not get notified? I asked the town manager, I talked to him on the phone one day, and I said, there are companies in North Branford that do cell towers. You had one that wanted to put up a cell tower and had another site. Why didn't you listen to them? He tells me they're too late. Too late for what? We never got any kind of a schedule. I've learned a lot about cell tower acquisition. I have, I have all kinds of surveys in my possession, I've had a professional pilot go up and put the, put his drone up exactly where the cell tower would be, and we can see it from all around the site. I am, I'm not going to keep going on and on because I think Frank did a great job talking to you about what the dangers are. I want to make a motion, but before I do that, I would like to ask the council commission to listen to the chair of the police commission to talk also about that communication project. Would you please help me with that?
Yes. Up there?
Yes, please.
Yeah, come on up.
I was thinking about, I was, I wanted to get stopped.
I'm too heavy for that. I'm going to pull this off for a minute. So, the police commission is in charge of communications. We, as commissioners, and the vice chair is on his way here, have no idea of what was going on until Vinnie Marino on Friday took his own time out to explain everything to me, and he was very helpful to get me in touch with the guy that proposed this deal. The issue is, we didn't do any of the studies, there's other pieces of property in our town that we own that could be suitable for multiple towers. He's willing to put up towers for us and have us be on the towers as the municipal for free. So we have access to a lot of other towers which could be safe for the community and in a better place than in the school. The school Board of Education wasn't even notified of this or the superintendent till September 30th. So they have no idea, so if you call, or anybody called from the towns about this, they don't have any idea either. If you call any of the commissioners which are in charge of this, we have no idea. Vinnie, the town attorney, which is in the back, helped me out Friday for several hours on his own time with the proposed tower guy, and the tower guy did write a very concert, a con, I can't say the word, but a good report, let's say. I tried, I wasn't getting enough. I would, no, yeah, it comes with it. But it's real good for the town, it's beneficial for the town, it's beneficial for the community, it's safe in other areas. This particular site doesn't fit the profile. The issue is, he spent $30,000 of his own money, our consultant was contacted, not by our commissioners or our police chief, which is here, and did all his preliminaries, which we just got today, around this site being done. So all this has been going on, we have no idea, commissioners haven't authorized anything, and it's not a suitable spot, but there are locations in this town that is suitable that we can actually use to our benefit for free with the same tower guy, because it is good. Here's a copy of one of the leases, if you want to pass it, several pages, this is already drafted, it's already made up to the town manager and everything, it's a lease. The chief, I get the rest of those?
But, but how did it, how did it develop?
I have no idea, I just got it on Friday, and if it wasn't for the town attorney, I won't have any information, thank God for that.
No, I'm talking about what Marie and other people have described, how did this develop?
That's a very good question.
Yeah, this came, again, we go back to the previous meetings where, you know, I feel obligated to bring forth a letter for an, as an opportunity. And again, I think we're getting ahead of the, you know, you've tabled it twice, you've looked at it and tabled it twice, the first thing to get started is make 24 referrals if you're interested, and again, I'm not trying to push a tower, but I feel obligated for the council to be able to evaluate an opportunity to, to address this communications and look at it and do the due diligence to say, you know, whether, whether or not it can even work, you know, because a lot of the pieces you look at, elevations aren't part right, and the town has a lot of different pieces.
Yeah, but what I, what I don't, I don't mean to cut you off, but what I don't understand is, isn't that what the police commissioner, commission's doing? For, don't we have a communications project going?
That's correct.
You have, you have, right.
So, so does that piece have anything, is that linked?
I think it has a small piece, and that's why I reached out to, to the consultant.
That's a crucial piece. That's the heart and soul, a couple towers puts us back into.
I think, I think that's, sorry. I think that is a crucial piece, because I think when we're looking at our town and the different topography, I'm having a hard time tonight, too.
It's hard.
In our town, one of the things we probably anticipate within this report is putting in some sort of tower to assist the communications in town. Now, if we look at something like this in conjunction with that, rather than us having to foot the bill for putting up a tower, we could potentially get one for free, and now we're hearing maybe even more towers to be useful for that, so it could be a money-saving factor for the town as well. And I think one of the, one of the things that I heard tonight that is a little concerning is, the first letter went out in July?
July 2nd.
And we've heard about it when?
August 27th.
And, 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 look, it seems like the, the project already had feet at that point, so that's concerning.
The guy, the guy Keith Pollens, which is AKA Wireless Infrastructures LLC, the one that proposed this, very good reputation, he's got seven, eight of them going on in other towns, other towns are taking advantage, two of them sometimes in towns. We have so much land here in areas where we can put this and utilize it for free, and he's willing to pay back money and give us communications. I would have loved to have reviewed this with the commissioners ahead of time and then brought it to the council to see if we could open up some other pieces of land that doesn't, has nothing to do with a school. The only thing I'd like to see if, is the guy Keith still involved with us, with the consultant, since he's willing to do it for free. I mean, he's, he's got like nine sites going in town. I talked to people from Monroe, and everybody's happy with him, so. And he's got a good reputation in the town, and if it wasn't, like I said, for the town attorney to bring me up to speed on Friday, I won't have anything to tell you at all. The chief got the consultant's report at 6:27 or 6:39 tonight. So there's really nothing for us to present yet, this shouldn't have got that far.
So Victor, you're saying there's towers that are up right now that we can use? There's ones that are up?
No, there's towers that he's doing in other towns, that he got the same deal going in other towns, it's a great, great situation. Financially for towns, it's unbelievable. I didn't think, I've done towers all my life, wired and we put them up, I've never seen one like this, so if he's willing to do them and we have the land, we should be taking advantage of them since we need.
But what I don't understand is, the commission, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the police commission has the task to work this project that, that we approved some time ago, right?
That's correct.
The communications project. What does this piece have to do with that?
Well, this is separate. No, this tower is the basis around the study that was being done.
That's how it's not.
No, that, this, this tower, this proposed tower had nothing to do with that.
That's.
That wasn't even, that wasn't even an existence.
Right, that's my question. Why, why is something going on simultaneously?
Actually, it does, because.
I'm confused.
Salk was advised that this tower is most likely going up, so he based his study on that tower.
I don't know how he could do that.
There's no way he should have done that. I mean, that, on that, that call that we were on, it is to say, listen, this is, and asking, because, and we had this conversation about what would a tower in that location, would that help us? It wasn't, and again, the council has not even had any action at all.
And therefore, you should not have given approval to have it surveyed and stated.
Well, it's due diligence to find out.
No, it's not due diligence, you never even told the town council.
I feel like a lawyer.
Yeah, Mr. Marino.
Let me just clarify, for purposes of tower development within your community, there are two ways that happens. There's the municipally-driven tower development, which is the project that the police commission is doing, what are the needs of the community and where, where your community should the towers be placed, to satisfy the emergency service needs of the town. The other way of doing it is, or the other way it happens is through the carriers, Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, they have needs in addition to the municipal needs. And in this instance, this was, Verizon has a, has determined that it has a need to fill a gap in its coverage in this geographic area. And there, I believe in Norfolk Center, there's a location that, where a tower could potentially land on private property. And so when the town was approached with this, there's a question of whether or not will the needs of Verizon be satisfied if the land, if that tower was shifted away from private property onto public property, so the municipality would derive some benefit if a tower were going to go in the geographic area. We can argue over process, meaning that in the first instance, it should come here to determine whether or not the first step in any decision-making process should be, before you even consider doing due diligence, you should come to council and get the agreement to do that. That's a process question, and we can discuss that. But the, the reason why this tower became a tower of conversation was not because of anything to do with the municipality, but because of the needs of Verizon. And so, so what, I believe what the town manager did is, said, well, it's potentially going on private property, let's evaluate whether or not it could go on public property so that we can derive a benefit from the location on it. Not making any decisions, but doing the due diligence. And again, at the end of the moment, that's, that's a process issue, that can be corrected through conversation and through setting up a procedure. But so, that was, that was really why or how this came into being. They said, the police commissions, you know, in. through conversation and through setting up a procedure. But, so that was, that was really why or how this came into being. They said, the police commissions, you know, in, you know, kind of, again, in retrospect, it should have folded in the police commission and the, and the experts to say, and I think that there might have been a conversation, town manager, can correct me if I'm wrong, say, well, if we were to incorporate a tower here, how does that work with what the police commission's doing, but they should be part of that conversation.
Attorney Marino.
Yeah.
Just so you know, somebody contacted Paul Zito, we have the report, and his report, line item three, was based around we're getting that done.
Okay.
So all that time and effort at Paul Zito, from the consultant we hired, is already incorporated into his service, so everything he did is now, I don't know, we just got it.
Right, because, so, so anyway, so that's how this tower came into being, but there was a question of how or why, it wasn't, didn't have anything to do with the municipality in the first instance, it had to do with the carrier's location of a tower. Because I think there, there should be, and you can, through what you're contemplating with what Victor had raised about locating towers throughout your community on municipal lands, the goal of the community should be to locate all towers on municipal lands, so you control where they are located, keep them away from population to the best of your ability, minimize the effects on the population, maximize your coverage, and get your non-tax revenue as a result of where they're located. That's why most municipalities are in favor of that. In addition to that, what Victor had mentioned is, most tower developers will provide incentives to the municipality. You know, paying for equipment, you know, you also get personal property tax, you get rental income, there are those types of benefits of having it on private, on public property. So, but, I think it started separate from what the police commission was doing. All right, so I think ultimately, it's, it's a process question that needs to be resolved, that would address Marie's concern of saying, why are we finding out, why did we find out about this so late in the conversation? And I think from the town manager's pers- and again, I'm just a tennis ball going back and forth here, so, but town manager's saying, well, it's my obligation to look into things, that's what I do, I do the day-to-day administrative stuff, and then I present it to you. What do I have to present to you if I don't do my due diligence? The other side of that argument is, wait a second, the due diligence was way too far and was way too intrusive, and you should not have gone that far without first coming to us.
Okay, I would, at this point, I would like to make a motion. I would like to propose, I would like to make the motion that the proposal to construct a cell tower on the rear property of Totucket Valley Elementary School is denied, and the jurisdiction of any future proposals for cell tower sites be overseen by the police commission, which is in charge of communications for the town.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike.
Well, as far as discussion, so what is this, what this has done, in my mind, is it's got the citizens coming to the council saying, you're putting that there, you're approving that there, why, as Frank was describing, as he was reading his, his letter, you know, it was directed at us, and it's not fair, because we don't even know about it.
You're right.
That's, that's what, that's why I kept asking the question, was it part, was it part of the, the commission's, because that's what it sounded like, it was part of the commission's project, and, and, but that to me is, again, a procedural issue.
And it makes me even more upset to find out that we're doing it for Verizon, we're not doing it for the town, we're doing it for Verizon, because they have dead spots. That makes it even worse to me.
Well, it is indirectly, it's also doing something for the town because of-
Right.
You know, if we, the town, you want the town to control it, as Attorney Marino, and we get a benefit from that. But I think the procedure needs to come to the council first, so that we know what the risk we're, we're signing up for, because we're, we're getting, you know, I guess I'll just say it, getting accused of, of, of trying to push something through that none of us seem to know about.
Okay, let me, let me do this. Motion was made by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Duty. Any discussion?
Just, I've got a comment. The overriding concern I have about this entire procedure is high like the rest of you, you didn't hear about it until late, the end of August. And that's troubling, that there wasn't that transparency for a period of two months while this was being worked on. But more troubling to me was not something objective that I can point to and say, you or he or whatever said this, that, or the other thing, but there was a sense of urgency when this was presented to us, that we had to move it forward, we had to refer it to the planning and zoning commission for an A24 referral, it had to be done right away, and it wasn't time to deliberate. When Marie moved to delay action on that referral and to delay consideration of this application, she met resistance that I thought was somewhat not really justified by the question that was being presented to us, with no backup information whatsoever. So the lack of transparency bothered me, the speed with which we were asked to, to move on this matter bothered me, and now I'm hearing that the, the body that is charged with considering communication in the town commissioned a study at the town expense, and that study focused on this site. That tells me two things. One, a significant part of that study may be a waste of money, town money, because the site is inappropriate for the use they were going to put to it. And secondly, how did the man conducting the study know to consider that site, when the people that employed him, the police commission, didn't even know about that site? Somebody spoke to that man. So there's something untoward going on here that makes me very, very uneasy about this entire process. And I, like the rest of you, have been getting calls and inquiries from a number of citizens as recently as last night. I was in the middle of three different things, my phone rang, and it was a citizen calling who happened to live in Marie's condo complex, asking why this was going forward, why was the town supporting it? And I didn't have any answer to a lot of those questions, but I understood the concern. I still have that concern, I still don't have the answers, and I'm really at a loss as to how this could happen in this town. When that letter came in on July 2nd, it should have been on our next agenda, or certainly the one thereafter. And if it had any ability to proceed, we should have known about it, we should have had input on it. That didn't happen, so there's something here that I can't quite put my finger on, but I can tell you, I'm not going to support something like this, or anything that's similar to this in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Anybody else? Michelle, can I have a vote, please?
Can we just recap with the motion? It's to, to take it off of Totucket Valley.
Right.
Right, is to-
And to put the jurisdiction for future site to the police commission, because they're in charge of commi- of communications.
And the citizenry should understand that our vote is really nothing more but advisory, because ultimately, if the developer wants to do this, he can take this to the Connecticut Site and Council.
No, he can't, Joe, he can't.
No, he can't, not on our property.
Okay.
It's our land.
Thank you, you're right.
But, but he could do it with a private party.
Yep.
Then it's, it's totally out of our jurisdiction.
Then it has to go with the site council.
Correct.
And then it's a three-year process.
Right.
Can we ask?
It's not a two-month process.
Do you want to answer to this question? I certainly would appreciate it. Can we ask the town manager, can you look into that and find out how this happened?
I, I can tell you, I mean, the letter comes in, and again, was on the agenda twice to, to, to do the, like I said and then reiterated, to try and bring to you due diligence without saying, listen, hey, here's a cell tower, and, and yeah, I understand the process in terms of, or the conversation, the comments about process, so moving along to do the due diligence to see and evaluate whether or not this site is going to work, and in the meantime, knowing that they're working with a consultant, I reached out to consultant, reached out to the fire chief, police chief, went on a call to say, listen, there's an opportunity approached by a company to, to build a tower in, in, at TVES with, here are the coordinates, and, you know, to see if this will move along. And not, I mean, as far as I know, the consultant's been working on it for, for a long time in terms of radios and deciding what radios and frequencies, and whether you go on the state system or, or build your own system, and I think he'd said multiple times that you're going to be presented, you know, you're at a fork in the road, you're either going to build your own system or you're going to go piggyback on the state system, recognizing that, you know, this might fill in a little gap, but it's not the entire system, and said that there's an opportunity, but never said, you know, this is, this is a done deal that, you know, we're moving, to say that this is it. And, and, and again, how many towers we have or what towers we're using, I, I didn't get into the whole level of detail with the consultant about how he's doing his job, about coming up with a plan for this council to, to take action on. It was just a, a small piece, a potential piece for a tower to be developed, from a developer. And, and, and from the town's perspective, to control that development, because it would mean that a developer's building, we're not putting $250,000 into building a tower, and then you get your radio, your equipment located on that, and it fills in, fills in a gap, a piece, not the entire system. Because he, clearly, the system, Parsonage Hill and Joe Wachikowski's tower is a major piece of this, and it's not going away. So, again.
I take exception, because I know for a fact that the town manager told the superintendent, and he told the company that this was a done deal, and I've been told that, so I take exception.
I've never used those words.
Chief, when you, Chief Allen, when did you get notification?
Without getting him involved, he wasn't notified until after the fact. We have all the documents, all the paperwork already handled.
Everybody's here at the same table, so.
Go ahead. Go ahead, chief. So as a matter of fact, I was called out after the fact. He notified Marie before I notified me, because he thought he was being thrown under the bus by me. I found out through a correspondence from the radio consultant that this was going on, three days, four days before it was brought to you guys.
All right, we got enough. Okay.
Take the vote?
Yeah. Michelle, you want to read that again, please, one more time?
The motion?
Motion.
Councilor Diamond moved, seconded by Councilor Duty, that the proposed tower, and I'll put in the address, at 1388, I think, Little Town Avenue, be denied, and that the jurisdiction of other cell towers be reverted to the police commission, who is responsible for this.
For the town communications.
For the town communications.
We have a vote, please? Make a roll call. Yeah, roll call vote.
Mayor DeMello?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zianpiano?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Duty?
Yes.
Councilor Floman?
Yes.
Councilor Gold?
Yes.
Councilor Pater Oster?
Yes.
Councilor Paliccia?
Yes.
Thank everyone. All right, next we have our discussion and action, Connecticut General Statues, A-24 referral for cell tower lease at TVES 1388, Little Town Avenue, tabled.
No, we just did that.
I did that. I was supposed to be up.
I was trying to follow along here.
I called early, I was wondering whether I called early, and I said, Tommy, help me out here.
Tommy's wrong. I would like to do that again, anyway.
No, that's doubts. All right, okay, let me see where we are here.
New business.
I thought maybe I had a different page.
It's almost the same thing.
All right, we got new business. Number 13, new business, planning and zoning report on town councils, Connecticut General Status, A-24 referral on the North Branford Police Department project.
I don't think we need that. We just, we just turned it down.
No, 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 this is the building, the police-
Oh, yeah, this is the project, sorry.
That's right, we're going to turn that one down.
No.
Okay.
Just, no, it's, it's, yeah, they approved, they, they voted favorably on the A24 referral in terms of the building project with no comments, so that can be entered in or accepted by the council in terms of the record, that there are no objections with being taken.
Okay, we need to do anything with it?
And was it, would the motion be necessary to accept that, or just?
It's simply, it's a referral back to you, if it's a positive referral, that just sets the vote as being a simple majority, when you go to vote on the project, if it were a negative referral, then you'd be in a super majority. But there's no action necessary to accept the report.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Michelle. Next we have update on building projects, bond process, and schedule.
Mr. Mayor, the members of the ad hoc committee for the high school project are, are here tonight, and they're going to present what they feel at this point are the pros and chairman, Al Rose is here, the pros and cons of the four different options, I'm going to pass those out to the council. Al?
You want me to come up there?
Yeah, please, yeah.
Go ahead.
You can sit up here if you want, you've been here.
So I'm, I'm like 12 feet away, so I'll hang this on one ear. So we had an aggressive schedule, all summer long since you appointed us, we met at least every other week, and a lot of the summer, every week. And we tried to go over the different phases, but we, we kind of ended up on, on two. We, we didn't do much on the renovate as new. We, we, we just left that alone as it, as it had been presented to you, because we did meet with the ONG estimator, and I think his numbers are, are, you know, they're, they're certainly not, well, I guess they'd be conservative in having enough money to spend on it, but he was able to back them up, so I think if you were going to look at that to renovate as new, you could just, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't change anything on that. So on the maintaining the existing facility, that one is, and this is where it's really, really neat that I don't have to make the decision that you guys have to make, so, you know, that one, we came up with a number of what we felt was, would be like the minimum to do something there, and it would be somewhere around 20 million. And, and you know, and certainly that's not the minimum that would have to be done, the school's open now. So that's something that if, if for some reason you decided to, to go that way, it's like, how much would you do there, and what do you need to do? I mean, you definitely would need to do the bathrooms, which would mean that we'd need to change the plumbing on the bathrooms and come down the outside. So, so we put what we felt was healthy numbers on, on things, the heating and cooling system, and anyone on the committee, jump in if I misspeak, but I think we were at 5 million for heating and cooling.
Yes.
And we felt that that was, that was sufficient. On heating and cooling in the existing building, the, the end from the gym, I guess to the north, the ceilings are low there, so that, so the ductwork would have to be exposed, so that section would be, have to, have to be done with, you know, the spiral duct like is done in a lot of modern buildings, and, you know, it wouldn't be above the ceiling, it would have to be exposed ductwork, and if you did that. But the, the rest of it, you know, we, we talked with a contractor that, you know, felt that that was a good number, and that that would, would cover that many square feet. So on the pros on that, you, if you, if you did maintain what you have, the town would have more square footage in a building than we're going to have if we knock that down and get rid of it, and then naturally then you'd be looking for a lot of state aid- and get rid of it, and then naturally then you'd be looking for a lot of state aid, and they won't let us build as big as that. So, so to me, that would be a pro that, you know, in the future, if our numbers go up, we wouldn't be adding on to the school. The other, the other thing is, it does have a new roof. The building is, the, the structure or the bones of the building is in good shape. Alls you got to do is walk up and look at the brick anywhere around the building, and then go to our ten-year-old school, and look at that, and, you know, try and guess which one is the oldest brick building. So, and then the only other thing that we did learn was that the, the halls in the diamond, you know, although it really probably, the COVID started in March, but we were told that they weren't cold anymore because they had to have the classroom doors open for ventilation and stuff, so with the classroom doors open, it was, the halls weren't as cold. So the cons to that is, and I don't know if Michael did hear back from the state, we didn't know if the state would pay any percentage of that or not.
No, no response back from the state.
No response, yeah, but we're pretty sure they wouldn't pay much, so the town would be on, would be beyond their own, but we're going to, hopefully they'll get back to Michael on that. Yeah, you would be just fixing up an old building, you'd have an old school when you got done, the unforeseen conditions, the, you know, I don't know how you would phase it, that's all something like, what do you do with the students when you're working on it? A lot of it in a project like that could be done in over three, four, five summers. The, you know, I don't know, I think if we do it, I, I see some of the stuff here, I don't, you know, I don't think, if you're doing it and paying for it, you wouldn't lose square footage, and you wouldn't have to take the skywalk down. So, you know, that, we, we looked at that, we tried to put a number on it, and that was, we, we put a number in for all new windows and doors. We had, we, we didn't carry as much in contingency probably as, as ONG would have, and I think they were going to look at it, so if they come talk to you guys in a couple of weeks, they may have different numbers. The, you know, I'm maintaining the existing is, you know, that's a, that's a decision that, that, you know, you guys have to weigh everything and make that decision. It is doable, you, you could make a safe school out of it, you could make a heated and cooled school out of it. And I think that's about it on maintaining existing, unless anyone else on the committee wanted to add to that. I don't know if Marie wanted to, or you're all good?
What about the water in the basement? I've been told it's riverbed.
So on that, so that's only under the locker rooms, and the plan for that is to just fill, fill that in and pour a cement cap over it above the water table, and that would, that would stop that.
So that room, that locker room that, if it had been used, it would just be?
There's nothing down there, and then, and actually, you'd, you'd really need to do the bathrooms, which, in talking to John Florio, the bathrooms are all on the, I guess the east side on that run, so instead of worrying about the plumbing that's down in that basement, and the plumbing that goes down the middle of the hallways, it would just go out the side of the building, and then the sewer line is, runs right along there, and just tie those bathrooms in, you know, right there. So, so we, we, we thought that, that we had addressed, you know, a lot of the concerns on that. So then if we move to the renovate as new, like I said, we didn't, we didn't really look at that, they're going to have a lot of the same issues you have in maintaining, only you end up with a, a new building. I think, I guess, if we renovate as new, you're going to have to knock some of it down to get the state money, because we have too many square foot, feet for the number of students we have. So that's really, like I said, we didn't spend much time on that, I think their numbers were arguably reasonable. So then we, you know, we, we spent a lot of time looking at the new facility where it had been proposed, and we stopped abruptly when we got the soil testing back, and you just wouldn't want to build a new school there. So, no matter how you look at it, you wouldn't want to build a new school there. And unfortunately, for trying to put a new school in that, on that complex, the best place for a new school is right where the existing one is. You know, they already did that in 1964, they picked the best spot on that swampy lot and built a school there. So, then we spent most of the last month working with, with Rusty, the ONG estimator, Scott, Bill Jody, Franny, and John Florio, and, and tried to see, you know, what can we do over here? Where could we put a new school? And so our option, what they're calling option four, is a new school that's, if you're facing the auditorium, the, it kind of makes an academic complex that's kind of in a, sort of a horseshoe, counting the intermediate school, the auditorium, and then the, the entry to the new high school. And what they would do there, so this, this, if, if you didn't have to spend more money on the foundation building in the swamp, this project costs two to three million more than building new in the swamp. However, there's a big unknown on building the foundation in that, where they first wanted to put it. And the reason is because they, and I think if, if you guys so choose, you're going to see the presentation on that school, on the new school in that location, is because they would take the diamond and turn it back into a Y, and brick up the end of that, and then build, about two-thirds of the new school would be from there, coming in, you know, coming.
That parking lot?
Right, coming this way. And then, when that's done, they'd be able to move students into the new school while they took down, maybe from, from the Y, over to the main office, or the, because they were going to still need to save the gym, because that would be built in the next phase. So they'd finish, they'd, they'd take it down to the administration offices there, or up to the gym, and leave that, leave the, I guess, leave the cafeteria, and then build the rest of the new school, and then knock it all down. So that, it, it could cost a little bit more, or I guess a lot of it more when you're talking millions, but not when you're talking lots of millions. So, and, and then that goes out, if they built in the original spot, it was a, roughly a two- to three-year project, because of the, you know, working around the students in the school, they, they added a year, saying that this would be a three-to-four-year project. So, that really sums it up for the committee. I'm glad that I don't have to make the decision that you guys have to make, but I would say, for myself, if, if you chose to build new over the renovate as new or maintain existing, this option four definitely is the place to put the new school, and it seems to work the best. And then the other thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to thank the Clinton school system, we went there because they had a fairly new school about the same size as us, and they were very gracious and very willing to share what mistakes they made on their three- or four-year-old school. I went with Franny, and, and we, we got to meet their head of facilities, or whatever they call them, and he was very open about, and he told us point-blank, don't use these boilers, they're way too smart. And they cost, what was it, $8,000 to service them each year or something? It was like, because he only had the one guy in the world that could work on it. So, yeah, I mean, you know, so we were seeing some of the same, same issues that we run into. And then the other thing that was really interesting, I'll, I'll share with you, just because it's, well, we have to, we have to laugh at it, because it's kind of comical. The mistakes that were made, because it was the same architect that did our intermediate school, and the mistakes that we're fixing are already fixed on that school. They built it, they built it correctly over there. The flashings that we're going to spend a bunch of money on?
And the break doors?
Are done correctly over there. They're just, just what, Mike, you?
Were done correctly from the start, or they?
From the start.
Oh.
From the start. But I think, you know, that's only three or four years old, or five years old tops, you know, so they had the five years of seeing what went wrong with ours, and they, they changed, the roof actually overhangs the brick, the windows are flashed the way that we're going to have to do it on our intermediate school, so that was just, that was just an interesting point.
They learned from our mistake.
Right.
They learned from our mistakes.
So, so I don't know if you guys?
I have one question out. Could you just clarify, through your, your time, do you think that the foundation for the first number four option, just for comparing dollars, you said, you said something that if those numbers were correct for the, you know, do?
Right, so.
You guys anticipate that, that could cost a lot more?
If you build in the, and we even got that from the ONG estimator, he, he admitted that he would, he would be nervous about building in the first location because of the amount of fill. So that's an unknown there, and so this one is more money if their numbers hold on the foundation in the?
Original estimate.
Location in the swamp, in the bud. But, you know, I mean, there was, you know, so the soil testing came back that there's at least nine feet of really lousy fill, and there's water, and a lot of water at about four feet. So they have to take all that fill out, but in order to do that, they have to de-water it. So I mean, this thing is just, just getting like, you wouldn't do it. You just would not, you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to build there.
So when comparing, how easily do you think you could have, or is it possible to have a two-to-three million dollar overrun because of unforeseen problems on that location?
Oh, definitely.
If not more.
Definitely, it could be, and then, and then we're going to have a school that's sitting over top of?
Well, you're going to have to permanently have pumps.
The same water that is wet, this wet part under the, you know, because it's wetter going out that way, and I know that Franny's dug some bitches out there to the, like, concession stand and all that, and I mean, it's like, there's just water right there, you know, so you're, and here's the thing, when are you doing the soil, the soil?
Tomorrow morning.
When?
Tomorrow morning.
Okay. So then, that, that's when we'll really know, you know, we're, we're going by when the auditorium was dug, and what Franny knows of the area is saying that this is, this is a sandier soil, and if you have to build on top of water-saturated soil, you choose sand over mud every time. And, and it's doable on sand. It's, you know, and, and muck, you have to dig it out, so.
Well, it's not uncommon to have a contingency of twenty-five to thirty percent on a project, so. Man, that seems extreme.
I'm just thinking about, you know, do we really?
It's not, it's not that extreme.
Do we really consider option four as being two-to-three million dollars more than option three, or is it really, should we just consider it about the same? Because of the unknown.
Personally, I consider it about the same, but I do understand the phasing and having to knock down part of the building, not damage what we're leaving standing, and breaking up the end of it, part of our walls, yeah.
But you would say option three is definitely a no.
Absolutely, yeah.
So you, you visited a school?
And not only that, the more we went on, and it was a hard, it was hard for, for our committee to keep saying no, and then finally, when, when the architect and the guy from ONG, finally when they got it that we just weren't going to go that way, then you kind of, maybe the ONG guy, he was pretty much, pretty much agreeing with us that we shouldn't build there, so.
That's what I, that's what I thought. So, so you visit a school, a newer, newer school. Did you happen to visit a school of the same vintage that is not in disrepair?
It don't exist anymore.
We did not.
Well, that's not necessarily true.
It's a former replacement?
No, like, I, I, well, that's not true.
Our 1964 high school?
We, we haven't quite bulldozed over Yale University yet, have we?
No, but they've been rebuilt numerous times from the ground up.
Well, and, and there are schools that are that vintage that are, that are active. It sounds like the problem here is the site, it's just, it's wet. The town originally put the campus in a swamp. We're trying to deal with that.
So anyway.
Yeah, if you don't mind me speaking up, I've been trying to look at it, and I made, I said this the other night, I'm looking at the school as if it's my home, right? The school's my house. Now, the first thing I would do if it was my house, if I knew my school was, or my house was in disrepair, I would figure, is this house worth fixing up, or do we tear our house down? Now, I mean, I have a house that's, you know, from the early eighties that needs some work, the bathrooms need to be done over, it needs work, and I'm not thinking about tearing it down right now. It's definitely going to be staying up. And the one thing that I see with the school, the school has been definitely neglected. The school has never been done over, never. I mean, I can't imagine a house being built in the sixties and never having new bathrooms in it. Can you imagine with a house in the sixties unless somebody really didn't use or took good care of it? But it's never been done over, it has the original windows, it has the original doors, there's the original everything. Then we're going to, and then, I'm looking at it, okay, we're good, we're talking about building a brand-new school. So we're going to build a brand-new school that'll be in the, not in the best location on that piece of property. The best location, Rusty had said this, the best location for the school on that property is where our school is now. That's the best location, is right where the school is right now. So, we're going to take and go, go to the work of putting up a brand-new foundation that'll be just like the foundation we have, which has no problems, minimal, minimal stuff, there's no structural problems with our school floor at all. The school itself, the whole, pretty much the whole back wall is just solid glass. If you change the, the glass in the back of the school, it would be brand-new. It's basically a steel slab, I mean, a cement slab, steel uprights with brick in between. There's nothing wrong with the steel, there's nothing wrong with the structure, you put new windows in it. I can't imagine building a new school at this time for this amount of money in this town. Don't get me wrong, if money's no object, because that's what it's coming down to, it comes down to money, right? That's what we're talking about, we're talking about money. If money's no ob, why don't we just build a 120 million dollar school? If money's no object, I would, I'm looking at as far as the money and for the town. I, I just can't imagine pouring another slab on that piece of property, and we're talking about, we want to make sure when we build a new school, we have block walls, because like the new school they saw on Clinton had sheet rock walls, we want to make sure our interior walls are blocked. That's what our school has now. Our school has block walls inside. We have a brand-new roof on our school. So we have a school that's in the best location, it's got a brand-new roof, it's got a good structure, it needs major work, we're not talking putting a couple million dollars in, we're talking 20 million dollars. And when we, I redid the numbers the other night when I added up all the money we were talking between putting 2 million dollars in windows and doors into it, 5 million between air conditioning, heating, 3 million in electricity, a million in plumbing on top of what, um, we had already talked about, the bathrooms being like 2 million. I added it up, it actually came out to under 15 million. So if we spent 15 million, we'd end up with a, I would think, a beautiful school, and you could take another 5 million and put a facelift on the whole thing, make it look like a new school from there. So if you pulled up, you would look and think it's a new school. I mean, people take old colonial homes from the turn of the century, and they gut them and do them over and put everything new on them, and they, Tom had mentioned Yale New Haven, they haven't torn that one down yet. But, at the same But at the same time, if I see something in that school, because I also think what we need to do is get a structural inspector in there, an actual structural person. Now, if we get a structural inspector in there and he says to us, hey, that school isn't solid, you've got cracks here, the structure's no good, but I mean, I can't see how the structure's bad on the school. If we start seeing these things, that's a different story. Uh, one big thing is the windows, they, you know, we keep hearing about, oh, the clock can be contaminated. Why don't we get somebody in there? Why don't we close up one of the, one of the rooms that's not being used? Why don't we pull the window out and see if that's an issue? Now, if we get in there and the structure's bad, and it's all contaminated with the windows and stuff, that's a whole nother issue. You know, if we find these things, but we're talking a lot of money here. We're talking possibly spending fifteen, twenty million over a couple of years. We could probably manage it where the kids really don't miss anything. You can put all new bathrooms in that school and put all new windows in it in a summer. So the kids will come in the next year, and they have all new windows and all new bathrooms. Take the next summer. I'm just saying, break it down and spread it out. And I, um, another concern I have as a town council member is doing it now. I don't think you could pick a worst year to do anything like this now with what's going on in the country. How do we take and spend, how do we have our town members driving around that are struggling with money, drive by and see us building a new seven to ten million dollar police station, and then drive by and see us putting a sixty million dollar school up? You know what? I mean, I would be like, oh my God, it must have hit gold up at Tilcon or something. I don't know how, you know, what, to me, it just seems like a tough time to be going this hard. And don't get me wrong, the school is, the school has been neglected. This town council put a lot of money up for the, for the bathrooms years ago, nothing was done. Nothing's been done to that school. It's never been refurbished. It should have been refurbished over the time period. Is that what I had to say? Thank you.
I understand where you're coming from, but the, the heat, the heat and the air conditioning has to be addressed.
Yeah, we talked to John about it. He said it's not a problem.
That should be addressed soon.
Yeah.
You know, the bathrooms should be addressed soon.
Like right away.
So I mean, can't neglect those. We know there's a problem there.
They've been neglected. But they've been neglected for fifteen years, and we gave them money to do it.
We can't just sit around for another five or seven years. You're right, Mike. If there's, we, we have an obligation for safe, secure, and a healthy environment, regardless of whether you refurbish it, build new, does it matter? Just like we talked about in the police station, that roof was bad, we had to repair the roof. We can't not repair anything at the, at the school. We have to make it safe, secure, and healthy for the children, right? For the students. And if that mean, whether, if that means we have to redo all the bathrooms, we have to redo all the bathrooms. There's, I don't think there's even an option. There's not even a question on that, in my mind.
No, they're ridiculous.
Then the other thing I think about is we hear these buzzwords about twenty-first century learning. Well, that may have already gone by to the wayside now, because now we're going into COVID learning, which we don't even know what it is yet. And we're in a, you know, and we, we look around here, we're, you know, we're, we're in a municipality, and many people in this room are probably in the municipality or have been in, in a municipality, probably haven't missed a paycheck since March. Well, there's many residents that I'm sure have. And, and I think that's what, what Walter was alluding to as far as people at a time like this to be spending money. We don't even know where, where we're headed yet. I think we really got to slow down a little bit, and we know that something needs to be done, and we have to do things. There are certain things that we can't wait. I think we have to, you know, we need to do something with the windows, investigate it, start to change them, see if there is an issue. Check the structure, check, repair the bathrooms. We have to do that anyways.
All those things that I, that I talked about there, the things, none of those things cannot not be done. I mean, we do, we do have to spend, the town has to spend, and I might, we're spending at least fifteen million. You got, we have, you know, there's no, there's no doubt about it. There's no way, we, we have to spend that much money. But I'm just trying to think of a way where the town doesn't have to spend forty million now. And what if we, what if we find, find out with the way things are going now, that we spend forty million, that a new, a new twenty-first century school is not going to school anymore? It's zooming in all the time. Who knows? What if they decide that we have to build schools a totally different way from now on? You know, we, we don't know. I'm saying, right now is just a, for me, I'd have a hard time, just like keep going back to my house. If I was buying or building a dream house this year, I would have canceled it six months ago. I would not be building my dream house right now. I'd be sitting back saying, we got to wait. We got to wait. But at the same time, if my house that I was living in, the bathroom was disgusting, and the place was unsafe, I'd be making it safe.
All I got to say is, we owe the kids in this town better than we're giving them. And like we said before, we keep kicking this can down the thing. I'm ready to retire. Do I want to pay no taxes? Hell, no. But these kids have to go to a good school. And I'm getting tired of sitting here, tabling this, doing this, doing this. Let's get it done, guys. Whatever it is, when we get our numbers, let's vote on the numbers, vote your conscience, and do it then. Right now, we don't know what we're doing. Right? So I am, I'm, I'm with you. I don't want to pay money, but I also don't want to waste money. Tell me a project in this town that we've done correctly since we've been here. One, please tell me. I don't know any. I've been here thirty-five years, I can't, look, when I read them, what, what project are you proud of? Jerome Harrison, T, uh, NDIS? No. No one can give me an answer. The answer is, maybe the libraries. That's the best answer. We need, like Mr. Potter always says, put our big points pants on and get this going down the road. You know what I'm trying to say? I understand COVID, I understand all that. COVID's not going to be with us hopefully the rest of our lives. So we're going to change our decision based on this? I still remember when we were at that meeting at NDIS. A couple of you people up there, oh yeah, this is the way to go, guys. Yeah, we're going to do this, we're going to do this. That was in January or February. Now we're going into November, and we're like, backtracking. Well, we need this, we need this. Guys, let's end it. I want to do something before next year we probably retire from this town council. Let's get these projects going and moving. And if your answer is we gave a police station seven million dollars, what's more important in this town with the children in this town? And we're going to worry about, well, we can redo the bathrooms, we can Guys, let's listen to the project, let's listen to the numbers, and vote your conscience when it comes in. That's all I got to say.
I think we have more homework to do.
If I could just explain the procedure, what we tried to do tonight, Lou, is kind of give you the pros and cons.
But it wasn't, it wasn't, no, I agree with you, but tonight it wasn't, we were debating on this.
No, what I'm trying to say is, we wanted to just give you the pros and cons. You have a, you have a presentation, give you time to think about it, look at the presentation. Next meeting, we have
They, they hold, Marie, they threw opinions in. That's where, that's where
Well, it's discussion, Lou.
It's discussion.
Right, so I had my discussion.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. This is a huge, huge decision, yeah.
I agree with you.
I want everybody's opinion, I want to hear
I agree with you, but
Yeah, your opinion's valid, just like mine.
All I'm saying is, let's, I'm really
Well, Lou, you have to give time.
Now, we have to think about it.
We wanted to give you time to look at the pros and cons. Look at the presentation.
Marie, I'm not arguing with you. All I'm saying is, let's get done.
We are, but we need time. We need people to give them time to look through the materials, and then we'll have a presentation at the next town council meeting, and the town council can weigh in. We're not
Did I ask for a vote tonight? No.
No, but I'm saying, we, we have a plan here. We're going to present it to you.
Tell them when, so you know, because, because you guys are used to doing stuff with your back against the wall, you know, to go forward, you, your deadline is November fifteenth.
Right.
Within a day or so.
And that's why we wanted to present to you tonight, so that it's up to you guys to figure out how you go forward November fifteenth. But
Does anybody know what, what that means as far as if, if we don't go forward, or if we do go forward? What, what's the impact?
So I, I believe what it means is to get the funding that, that they're holding for us, November fifteenth, we have to come up with a project and go forward.
Right.
If you don't do that, then you'd start over July first.
Right.
You might not get one yet.
Which is, which is what?
Right, not next year, which, and then you
Which is, which is, what's the dollar value?
How you think you guys have to
Do we know?
On, on, it would be, he's asking about the
We don't, what we don't, we don't know if they'll even be funding the year, the next year, because of what's happening in the state. We don't know that. That's why we're trying to make a decision by the fifteenth and eleven.
But the proposal that Walter's in favor of, which is fix what we got, you think, right? That's, the whole check for that is on us.
Right, there's no reimbursement for the
Right.
Well, it's according to what Rusty presented, there's minimal state, there, there could be some reimbursement, but most of it, most likely, is not
Assume most of the twenty million is in our tax base.
Correct. But if we build new, and we'll use the sixty million, and we're at, you know, the reimbursement rate or the, that we would get out of the sixty million, we're still on the hook for somewhere around thirty-five to thirty-eight million dollars. So that thirty-five to thirty-eight compares to the fifteen million that Walter was speaking about if we just fixed what we had.
Because it's really, it's like forty million. It's forty something million.
So all practical purposes, it's, it's double.
Right.
Correct.
All right. I'd just like to say thank you very much for the ad hoc committee. I know you guys had a very busy schedule preparing for tonight. I think you guys gave us good perspective. Just to speak to a couple of other things that were mentioned tonight, you know, the, as Lou brought up, you know, the other schools, there were issues, there were problems. I think it's important for anybody watching or the public paying attention that we get accused of dragging our feet a lot, and maybe we do to a certain extent, but it's only because we're looking out for the best interest of the town. We don't want to make those same mistakes that have been made in the past. Um, I think everybody here has identified that the high school is a problem that needs fixing. We just want to make sure that we're responsible with your money, and, and we give the, the kids of this town the best possible solution, but also keeping in mind the taxpayers as well. So I know, you know, it seems like we're dragging our feet a lot, but it's because conscientiously, we all want to make the best decision for the town. So I hope that, I hope that we can come together with the information that we've been given and, and do just that.
Thanks, Ron. I think we all feel that way.
If I could just, you know, just add
Yeah, sure.
From what Al just said, you know, the, the timeline of eleven fifteen, and, you know, I put in the memo here, there are a few other items that the council's going to have to wrestle with, or, or prepare for, which is, you know, deciding what you do with the high school is one thing, but, you know, the project with the police department moving forward, getting that in the CIP plan, whether or not you're, you're going to move it to the permanent project building committee, keep that on track. There are two, you know, two vacancies in that position, something to look at and consider as you move forward. Um, you know, the timing of the, of the going into the market, whether or not you're going to add anything, any other projects, being the communications project or high school, if you're going to bundle them together to go into the market at one time, or if you're going to separate those, those out. Those are considerations that I tried to outline in the memo to get you to think about the process and the timeline. And so, you know, having a presentation next month if you want, by, by Rusty, and talk about the school, to have the consultant, if it's ready to, to be here with communications, and talk about three major projects that if you want to bundle, fine. If you don't, you split up and decide which ones are going forward, which ones are on, on hold. Uh, but there are considerations that need to be thought of beginning tonight and moving in sequence toward getting everything lined up.
Maybe we can get some input from Anthony also.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, again, and also, I'm sorry, one, one more aspect. In, on the school side, the architect has taken it as far as he can go. So I would need to bring to you the bid specs in an RFP slash Q, much like we did on the front end, when we had a committee, I think Al was a part of, that, that selected to, to go, like we did for, well, we did it differently with Silver Petricelli, but they're, they're going to take this, Silver Petricelli's taking this all the way through. But we're at a gap now where we've got to bring the selection through to, to do the school if you decide to do it.
Weren't we also, weren't we also going to meet with the state? Didn't we request that?
Yeah, we're still waiting to do that. That's kind of a key thing we need to do.
I thought we said that at one of the meetings.
The ad hoc and the town council want to meet with the state to go over funding and everything, talk about what they would give us for all three options. The state supposedly, they're supposed to come, but they keep, because, you know, because of the COVID, it keeps getting put off. That's something that definitely needs to happen.
Yeah, and
Is that on your plate, Mike?
It, it can be, sure. I mean, but again, it was, I think we, I thought we agreed we were going to move till later, and then the state came in to do, to do, I guess, a walkthrough or what have you. I don't, I don't know that that replaces it, and we just reach out again. Again, I, I have a, a call and an email into Costas at the state to ask about the maintain. I can certainly ask, you know, again, if that's the directive and, and the will, the council to get him here, if possible. That might have been the one and only shot that, that we had, and, and he came early, and it was kind of a last minute thing. I don't know if, if, and I don't know, it wasn't Costas, it was some other, might have been Herman or somebody else, but I don't think it was Costas himself.
So just to expedite things, can we just have Mike get us hard figures on that? Or do we, do we still want somebody here in front of us? Because then we'd have to wait till another meeting.
I think we should be able to meet, meet up with them and ask them questions. That's what we had talked about at one of the council meetings, if we want to do that.
They may be unwilling to meet.
Yeah, I mean, that, I mean, you can ask, but it could be out of our
I think you get one bite of the apple.
We could do a Zoom call? Could we do something like, possibly do a Zoom meeting some night?
If they'll even meet with us, that's the question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that, they might have had one bite of the apple, I don't know.
I mean, this is some pretty big numbers, some pretty big stuff. I mean, seems like Anthony, you have anything?
Uh, no. It's, it's, as Al mentioned, it's, it's a, you know, a predicament that you guys are in as far as a fork in the road. Uh, just refreshing your memory from when we talked back in May, June, we did all three projects, the impact on the taxpayers, about five hundred and sixteen dollars for the three hundred thousand dollar house per year for the span of the debt service. Um, as Mike had alluded to also, we have that third piece of the trifecta that we're going about to bond for, the communications piece, was, we should be having hopefully a number of times for the next council meeting on the twentieth. But doesn't address the concern that you guys have, a decision you have to make as far as what Al presented tonight. So there, there comes a point where we have to make a decision. And all three of those projects got to go out and get bonded, and probably short-term notes initially, till we, you know, try to time this so that it doesn't impact our debt service drastically, and try to time it out to that year when we have a significant decline. So we're going to issue short-term debt for the first couple of years for all three of these projects. I did get from Bill Silver today a cash flow projection as it relates to the high school. And I did contact Rusty to get one as it relates to the option six of the building of school. But again, that's not the course we're going to go down. I'm going to need a cash flow projection from somebody within, you know, architectural background to say, okay, if we're going to do the windows, this is the timeline, we need money. If we're going to do the door, we're going to do the money, you know, how the money's going to flow. So I know how much I need to get from the, from the marketing to actually have money to do these projects. What's the timeline? Is it over two summers? You need how much for next summer or the summer following? We could do short-term notes. You know, the police station is roughly, we have a pretty good number on that. There's a couple of add alternates that may be added on it. Again, so the number is going to be fluctuating a little bit. So we, there was a number, we talked about seven and a half and that may not be the right number anymore. So there comes a time where it's got to come to a head and it's got to be a vote to say, okay, 7 point X for the police station, 20 point X or 40 point X for the school, five, six, seven, whatever the numbers for the communication. Okay, Anthony, go get the money. We'll put it into the CIP. CIP comes to you guys, gets blessed, goes out to 824 referral, it comes back and when it's done, we have bond resolutions from Robinson and Cole and we're off to the market. So there's, Mike gave you the, the series of meeting dates between the town council and planning and zoning. We got to try to make a decision. It is, if the 20th is not going to be a good number, make a decision for you guys. Obviously, I guess the guy Rusty's coming to the meeting on the 20th. Is that the game plan? So let's shoot for November 10th. November 10th council meeting. That ties into Al's date about the 15th in November, you got to have a decision to the state. So November 10th, we make a game plan. We pick three things, boom, 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 we go. You kick it out to planning and zoning, November 19th, day 24, hopefully positively back to you guys, the whole, the whole CIP. Not only these three things, everything in the CIP goes to planning and zoning. It comes back to you guys, 12-1. Adopt it. I got bond resolutions ready for you on 12-1 and we go in the market. We probably won't go in the market, again, depending on the cash flow. Depends on what the school project is going to be out to next summer. I'm not going to issue bonds now. If we're not going to go out and do it until next July, you will need some seed money though. If you do, if you do the 40 million dollar deal, you need about $4 million of seed money for architectural work. So again, the fork in the road, we're coming up to it pretty quick and we got to make a decision if we ever go down the road. Are we going with the fix what we have or are we going with the new? Because it's going to dictate when I go into the market to get money and how much money do I get for all three of those projects? To the radio one, is it strictly by our radios? Is it building towers on our own dime or not? That's a longer span duration. The order on the radios is relatively short. But again, what's, what's involved in that communications project? So we got three big.
Well, that has to be a presentation to the town council anyway.
True, so that's next meeting, I believe, right?
Could be, yeah.
Theoretically.
I hope so.
So if the 20th, we get a good idea on communications, let's say. November, and the 20th, you get the guy giving the presentation on, on the school. Maybe by the 10th of November, you make a decision. And say, we got to make a decision because it ties into Al's timeline, it ties into the bonding timeline. And then it becomes when do you want to do these things? Again, if you're going to do the 20 million, you're going to do it over the next two summers. You need a little bit of money for somebody's rest of architectural plans. Are you going to do the 40? You got to do the whole schematics and everything else. I mean, it's, we got to, we got to make a decision. So let's shoot for November 10th then, council meeting, guys. Because we got a bunch of things to the CIP that we have to add as well. We start with what was approved in the budget back in April, May. You let the police kick some additional money they had out to the CIP. You have to add those projects officially. Fire kicks some money out. Recreation kicks some money out. Brandy kicks some money out. Those all have to be added officially to the CIP. So you got probably a dozen things to add. You gave, you gave Bill, they issued us to do the money to the fire trade. That's got to be officially added to the CIP. So there's probably a dozen things you have to add exclusive of these three major things. So maybe what I'll do is I'll have that on your next agenda. You want to do a finance one, do finance for us, you said?
We can, and if you, well, if we need to have a special, you know, like on, on an off week for finance subcommittee, that's fine. But I agree with you. I think we should, finance should probably try and the ones that we already know that we kicked out there, we should get those done.
Yeah, it's a no brainer. Okay. So on next meeting, I'll have, I'll have the dozen or so things that you already kind of de facto added to the CIP, well, officially added to the CIP. And then we'll talk about the three things at November 10th meeting and we'll kind of go from there.
So just to clarify. The, the November 15th. So if we miss November 15th, what's the impact? Does anyone know? Can anyone speculate the impact? Is it 1 million, 2 million, 20 million, 30 million?
Well, you don't know because you don't know what your reduction in state reimbursement will be. It's all an estimate.
Yeah.
It could be 3 million, they told us.
Anthony, we're not letting you off there.
Well, it's, it's hard to say. I mean, it's all, it's all speculation.
Right. But my point, my point is, is it, like, let's, let's just make believe we're, that we'll be, we could get a reimbursement of 30 million, say, like, like we, by the November 15th. If we let, if somehow we let that go, we couldn't get a vote or we couldn't come to a, you know, whatever. And it, so we had to go to the next year. Is it zero?
No, it's reasonable.
Is my, is my question because it, before it, the, the, it was kind of alluded, it could be, there could be no money, it was said. That, that means to me zero. Right. So that's where I'm getting, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking. What's, what's a speculation?
We could probably find that out from the state when we meet with them, right? Well, we got to, we got to, no, you got to make sure the state's going to fund the school projects.
Right.
You got to, got to make sure the state's going to fund school building projects. If the state says, no, we're not funding any more school building projects, well, guess what? You're 62 million on the hole.
Then it could be zero.
Or it could be 15 million on the hole.
He basically put a whole low income and middle income housing assistance.
Yeah.
Those projects used to run through the state bond commission regularly for mega millions. He has cut way the hell back. You don't know what he's going to do next year.
I'm just, I'm just asking just because, you know, we, we always talk about how making decisions with our back up against the wall. Well, it's up there now. It's, we're, we're there. So I don't know how we.
We know what we've got this year.
You know.
Next year is an unknown.
I know, but that's what I'm just saying. So, you know, we got our backs up against the wall, it appears, and we were trying not to do that yet. That's where we're, that's where we're at.
It's a $20 million delta. You're going to get 20 out of the 62, bring your nets about 40. And if worst case scenario, you get zero next year, you're, it's a $20 million gamble.
Right.
That's worst case scenario.
Anthony, can you just tell us about the, the bonding?
Yes.
And the interest rates. Everybody talking about now's a great time to do it. The interest rates are low, but then you said, you know, you wouldn't bond right now, you'd have to, you'd wait because, you know, so.
If you remember back, we talked about our debt service curve. We have a significant drop off two or three years out. If we don't time it right and we start putting our debt service up, our, the goal is to keep debt service as level as possible. We don't want to have any big deviations. So we're trying to time it by issuing short-term money, short-term money, and then we'll have the, the principal kick in so that when a debt goes off, we stay level. That's our goal, try to keep our debt service level for bonding, for budgeting purposes. And it's also as far as good cash flow because you have 18 months to spend the money. Well, you know, the school you talked about is going to be a three, four-year project. So you're not going to issue bonds on year one. You're going to issue bands, short-term notes for a year, give you some seed money, when those mature, you'll issue them again. And then the third time, third year out, you'll start bonding that and hopefully it ties into your debt service schedule so it doesn't have, you know, a huge impact. It kind of makes things kind of status quo. That's what we're trying to get to. That's, that's the whole goal.
So the interest rates now don't really.
Phenomenal now. But you said it's not phenomenal. The, the short-term bands are about 0.6. It's almost like free money. So you're, you're going to pay interest. But again, why would I, if I'm going to, I'm going to need the money for next summer, I'm not going to go borrow the money now, borrow it March, April. And even though it's cheap money, why, I don't want to waste money. So it's all about the timing. The cash flow projections on all three of these projects are instrumental to figure out when do I go to the market to buy?
Right.
So with Mike mentioning, you know, got to get the CIP approved and everything else and the bond, just that resolution is passed, I'm not going to the market the next day. It depends on what, what these three people tell me about their cash flow needs. So Robinson, Cole, I've already been talking with them and mentioned Mark Chapman, our financial advisor. They're all on board, they're all ready to pull the, you know, pull the trigger and start going with these things. But we need some kind of direction. Again, the 20 versus 40 is a significant issue, you know. So I'll have to tell them November 10th.
It is. I mean, it's a significant issue from option one to option four because that's also a 20 million swing and that's a, that's a decision, right?
All right, we got money.
And, and, and it's really not, we just got to be careful what, how we, what terminology we use, free money. It's not free money.
Oh, no.
Even if it was zero, zero interest, we've still got to pay it back.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So for anyone listening, we still, you still have to pay the money back.
Yep, I got about it.
Anthony, when you had said that for a $300,000 home, the taxes would be about 516, they would increase.
Per year.
And now on a $300,000 home, what does that average person pay right now in taxes, ballpark?
Uh, I can do math for you quick. My phone's out there. Hang on, let's look to the math where.
Say about 7,000.
Yeah, 6,000, 7,000.
It's more than that.
Yeah, no, 3,000. For market value times 70% divided by 1,000. Yeah, about $7,200.
So that's what it is now.
That's what they're paying currently.
So 7200 person per year is going to get an increase of 516, ballpark.
Correct.
Ballpark. So if we look at it at 516 increase, we could basically say for every 10 million, it's going to cost each person $100 a year. Right? It's $500. So every 10 million, it's going to cost each taxpayer $100 a year or more.
Well, let's see, because the five, this predicated on the 40 net for the school, this is predicated on the 7 for the police station, so 48, I think we used four, so you're probably about 52. Yeah, that's a reasonable number.
Yep. So.
It's about a 7% increase.
That's assuming we don't have to raise money for something else.
Right.
Right.
Right. All the things being equal, which.
Never happens.
Never happens.
And I'm sorry if you just said this, but the 500s for all three packaged together.
All three. And that was the estimates we had back then.
Right.
So I know that, like I said, the police stations kind of deviated a little. Right? The communication was, was a kind of conservative number that's going to be deviated. So it might be close to $600 a year for the, for the span of the, of the bond.
It's always going to be higher, ain't going to be low.
It's always going to be higher. Nothing goes down.
And then Anthony, would you say that this year for North Branford, that, that North Branford's in the best financial shape it has ever been in?
Uh, I would say it's damn good. I would say our collection rate was again 98.6, I believe, last year, which is where it's, it's, you know, it's deviated closer on that, but that's, that's good. We have very few people who opted for the deferral, the 60-day deferral. And so that, that was a good sign. Our financial operations are doing the audit now. Be another year in the black. I think our fund balance is strong. I think we have, you know, good policies, procedures. I, I say it's.
Good.
I wouldn't say the best time ever, that's kind of a broad statement.
Yeah, but it's, it's good.
But it's damn good.
Yeah.
And the markets being sucked, houses are being sucked up.
Yes, it's a buyer's market. Seller market.
But there's incredible movement from New York. And, and, and in a one-hour circle from New York, Connecticut's seeing an, an impact in terms of buying, so, yeah.
Thanks, Anthony. Thanks, Anthony. Scott, did you want to say anything?
Scott, you want to say something? The question about the impact of time, what happens if you, if you kick it into another year? You get into total population of students, you could lose some of your square footage and opportunities. And then the cost going out a year, you know, and, and times changing could be significant. I, I want to thank the ad hoc committee. I, I was at the meeting when we booked that options before and everyone was excited about a new building that, that echoed throughout. And then the location was the problem and then it was moved closer to the auditorium to fit the educational needs of the children. You're looking at a building that is, as everyone said, built in '64. Patchwork to the building may get you a little time, but there's things that are significant with the water coming up through the septic, through the, through the pipes because they're settling. We, we know about that. You know about the basement, the electrical, there's only a couple outlets in every classroom. So for teaching and learning after 21st century, it, it doesn't come close to fitting it. So I think you, you know, we have to look much broader than what you were saying. And I understand what you're saying. It's a big charge for you, knowing that you have other things in mind with the police and the communication. But this is something that it's, it's long overdue. The building has been kept up. The building is clean. There's things that over time just, you know, have been kicked down the road. So I think you know where I stand and what I think the best option is and, and hearing from other community members. And, you know, I respect your charge and what you're asked to do. But just, you know, we, we want to make the right decision. We want to make the decision for 70 years and we look back and say, wow, that was done right 70 years and it was stood the test of time. And that building that we're in now, it withstood that. And it's 70-plus years old and it's, it's, it's time. Because the gym, the other, the library, the media center, they're all outdated. They all need significant work to them, aside from just patching and doing windows and bathrooms and other things. There's so many things within the guts of that building that need to be done. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Okay. Anybody else? Thanks.
Take care, man.
Thank you.
So would the plan be then to invite Rusty Malik to present and go through for the council?
Yeah.
We're going to have to, yeah.
Lou doesn't have to listen if he doesn't want to. Just a joke. I probably don't like that listen.
Oh.
Whoa.
Oh. All right. We all set? Let's, let's do a review of proposal for police consultant services.
That is a request on the part of the police department to have a consultant to prepare the CLIA certified. They really need the assistance. That's a sole source provider. You have a presentation there of where they can transfer the funds and it's something that has to be done within, I think it's within four years. And you'd almost have to dedicate one business to work on this because there's so much that has to be done in terms of getting ready and getting that accreditation.
Yeah, so.
Do we have, is there anything to vote on?
Yeah, I, I think there should be in terms of, I think there should be a simple motion by the council to agree with it, you know, to, to go with a sole source and, and treat this as a, as professional service. And I think, you know, compared with town attorney to do that, I think would be the proper, proper motion to do at that time.[1515.33]
So then I'll make the motion to approve the transfer of the funds of this department in order to hire the sole source, sole source provider, to help with the CLIA appropriation for certification.
I'll second it.
It's on your appropriation, Adrian.
Yeah, I think that, that part of it is in one of the other motions, so this is just to approve the process?
The process? Okay.
Is that what?
Right.
So you want.
Sole source.
And go with the sole source.
Wait, wait, wait. What does that mean, approving the process? We're not dealing with costs of it?
No, there's the appropriation transfer, which comes up after this, which will deal with the cost of it.
I couldn't find this guy's fees in here. I.
It was ten thousand something.
You did find them?
No, it was twenty-one thousand.
It was twenty-five.
Wait.
It's twenty thousand.
Right. Just a moment.
Are we, we are, we're going to approve the consultant services for the Branford Police Department? For the Branford Police Department?
No, did I say Branford?
No, he didn't.
That's what it says in the document.
Oh.
Yeah, it does say Branford.
Oh, that's right. It says it on the cover of the page.
Might as well give them some money.
He's making a pitch to both. Why save the printing costs?
That's how I didn't see that.
Okay. I didn't get a second. Mike, did you second that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Motion, any discussion? Motion was made by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Dooties. Any discussion? Any further discussion?
What's this, what's exactly this for?
What's the motion, what's the actual motion?
The services to prepare them for the accreditation that they have to do.
Okay, okay. All right. Wanted to make sure I got it clear.
Okay. We have a vote. Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay. Next, we have two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty appropriation transfers.
You should have received an email today from Gina, I believe, or in your packet to some revised, the revised form.
Yes.
These, the two major ones kind of coincide again to things you previously approved. You gave police the ability to transfer the seventeen-eight out to the CIP for the roof project, and you gave the fire the ability to transfer. The thirty-eight is different than the forty-two. There was that previously, there was a couple of expenses that hit after the, the final numbers, now thirty-eight oh-one, to transfer that out. And then the two percent fund is something that you gave the board of ed previously, the ability to move that two percent out to another fund. And you can take that on hold. It was finalized today about five o'clock. We get the numbers reconciled, so you can take that little caveat off there.
So, on the Board of Education, so.
It's been resolved. The final number is about sixty-two thousand four eighty-eight is the net at the end of the day, if they have left in their account.
Okay. So from the two-point-two million.
Sixty-two thousand.
Okay. But, so, so thirteen, item thirteen D in our packet originally was to take care of what we just passed the motion for, for the twenty thousand plus the fifteen fifty for the electronic fingerprinting. But now.
No, that's, that's the twenty-twenty-one. That is, that's number.
Well, it says here, well, it says here thirteen D in our, you know, the.
On the iPad.
Yeah.
Thirteen D is the nineteen, thirteen D is nineteen-twenty.
Right. That's what I was, okay. At our desk.
Yes.
It says thirteen D, because on thirteen D on our desk is different from thirteen D in our, and didn't transfer over the amount in our iPad. Thirteen D didn't move over to what's on our desk, so I just wanted to make sure.
The handwritten copy is right. My one with a note on it is right.
The handwritten copy just came out today. This came out today.
Right.
Thirteen D, yeah. That's it.
The other one was last week.
So the thirteen E is the.
Thirteen E is going to be your twenty-twenty-one appropriation, which is the twenty thousand for the CLIA.
So page one fifty-five on our iPad should really be thirteen E, because it says thirteen D. That's why.
And that wasn't revised? Is that what?
Which one?
Thirteen E.
Thirteen E was not revised.
Okay.
D was revised, and F was revised, that you have in your email today.
Okay.
And then after these get posted tomorrow, the last year will be officially closed. The auditors are in working this week, so this will be the final, any kind of modifications to last year, and the other bills will be hit in the current year.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised item thirteen D appropriation transfers for fiscal year two thousand nineteen-twenty.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any further discussion? We have a vote. Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
All right. Next, we have two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one appropriation transfers.
Okay. So this is.
This is the twenty, for the CLIA, yep, and the scanning fingerprint.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So moved.
Second.
Joe, is that you?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Fornin. Any further discussion? Vote, please. Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
All right. Next, we have contingency appropriation, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
This for our COVID expenses, we submitted about seventy-seven thousand six hundred and change of COVID expenses to FEMA. They promptly rejected about three-quarters of them, saying they're not going to cover them. So we're going to try to get that money through the state, but being realistic, I realize there's going to be some out-of-pocket cost. So just taking ten thousand of contingency from last year, putting it out in that same pot that the COVID expenses are in, in case the, either the FEMA or the state funding doesn't cover a hundred percent, we have some money to fall back on. This will also be the same fund where the tornado expenses that we talked about earlier were bran, there will be a need for our percentage of that money as well. So right now, we're at, we did a hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred on tornado expenses already. So again, if the state only covers FEMA, only covers three-quarters of that, we're going to have a good chunk out of our pocket on that as well to come up with down the road. So this money won't go to waste, it'll sit up in that two-two-five fund that we'll use either for shortfalls on the FEMA expenses on COVID, or we'll use on shortfalls on the FEMA expenses for either the tornado or the Izzy Esos. We had some expenses tonight, Izzy Esos, which ended up not materializing into a FEMA event that may cover some of the balance in that as well. So there's always going to be these storms or FEMA events that you won't get a hundred percent on the dollar, so this money won't go to waste out there. The other piece is, there was the retroactive rent adjustments on the three firehouses that has been before you guys, and two out of the three have signed documents that the money's been dispersed. The one company has not signed, I believe, yet, so that has not been dispersed yet, but again, just kind of locking up the money from a June thirty perspective, and that's what that other item is for.
So the reserve for whether it's COVID expenses or the storm expenses or whatever, because even after we do this, ten thousand for COVID, not covered by FEMA, I see that we still have in contingency approximately fifty thousand dollars. Do you think we need to reserve more than the ten thousand dollars? Take.
The only problem is, you can't use last year's money, because all those other two storms came.
Came in August.
This year, so.
Okay.
To proper accounting, the expenses I applied to FEMA already were June thirty and prior.
Okay.
So it's make logic use some June thirty and prior money. I can't use that money for this year's expenses.
Yeah, okay. Got it.
It would be nice, but it just doesn't make my better timing.
Right. Okay. All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contingency appropriations for two thousand nineteen-twenty as presented.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any further discussion? We have a vote. Michelle, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
All right. Next, we have citizen statements and petitions.
You probably think the pain in the butt's here again, and I am. I got to get a life. I sit out here for too many years. First of all, let me give you a compliment. For a while, it used to be so party-driven that nothing ever got done. There doesn't seem to be any party problems here at all. You guys are all on the same page, so that's a compliment. I mean, it used to be nitpick stuff. It was kind of disgusting. Then I think you had the problem with the building committee. They had way too much power, but not the intelligence on how to spend the money. And I think that got you in a lot of trouble. So I think you've reeled that in now. Haven't you voted on something where they can't even spend a dime without you guys knowing about it?
We haven't sent them any projects yet.
Good, well, good.
And we're not quite sure if we're going to.
Well, that's good, because those are two major mistakes. And again, this is where the history comes in.
The building committee we could blame for some of the intermediate school problems, especially.
Well, I mean, they just didn't, they didn't, they weren't really, but they kind of had their own little cloud, and they never got challenged, and it got away from them. And they made silly mistakes. I'll use that Rick Brick thing until the day I'm dead. It'll be on my tombstone. I've sat out here, and I've listened about, and I call it NBIS, no bottom in sight, the original police department, which was built to residential standards, the ambulance barn that was condemned before the ambulance went into it, and they had to repair it because the brand-new building didn't meet standards, the FRC building, remember that? That was a lot of talk, Jerome Harrison.
But that wasn't us.
Well, I know, but I'm saying.
That wasn't us.
I know, but there was, so I hear the fairy tales, but I have the wounds from what happened before. And so you've said, yeah, we got to, you've got to make a very hard decision, but you've got to make it, and you've got to be happy you made it. We have built two libraries at once in the past and survived somehow, right? I mean, well, okay, come on, now help me. I want help.
They had smart systems put in libraries, or the best systems put in libraries, and asked Franny the freaking problems you have.
Although, I know, Al spent a whole street there on his own, yes.
So I mean.
Go back to conventional.
The problem is, architects design, but they don't design functional buildings.
Exactly. And we're stuck with them. And we're still stuck with them. So we're trying to go forward, and if you start squeezing the pennies, you're going to, you're going to save the pennies, but the dollars are going to go flying. You've got to do what's right, and it might hurt, but citizens have done it before in this town. We financed things that had to be done, and it's got to be right. And you've got to do it soon, and you've got to do it, you know, next month. We have faith in you guys. You're all in the position. Excuse my back.
Or you're fine.
Or back. But again, it's, it's hard, but we've all survived with good council people in place. Michael's been here for years. Rose, you've been here a long time. The statesman here, he's still.
Oh, he outweighs me, so the statesman.
Hey, hey.
No, he's, he's fairly new.
Mike's a senior.
He moved over, he moved over from planning.
From planning zoning, yeah. He jumped from the frying pan into the fire.
That's when dirt roads were in town. You were on TNC back then.
So I mean, we've got good people, we've got good history, but we've got to make good sense of what's coming down the road, because we've been hit from this side, and you're right, you're architectures. So you have to be careful what you want. You may be trying to save a hundred dollars for a taxpayer, but when it comes time for the repair bill, it might be two hundred thousand you need to fix what you saved them a hundred dollars on. So sure, you saved a taxpayer a hundred dollars, but now you've got to go into higher taxes to fix that hundred-dollar mistake that the architect put in the building that shouldn't have been there. So do you understand where I'm coming from? I may not be expressing myself on that. I know I'm a pain in the neck, but I've just seen so many mistakes made, and they've got to stop.
Do you understand where I'm coming from, the way I'm talking about it?
To a degree. But at what point does saving a dollar cost two hundred and fifty thousand in a couple of years? You have to be careful how you save the buck now, because you may not save it later. North Branford Intermediate, you're going to be dying when they go, that's coming from inside those bricks, that black stain. It's not coming over the top. You know when that wall comes down, there's not going to be anything you like behind it. You know that. Mark my words, I'll, I'm going on record tonight. When you tear that wall down, you're not going to be happy, because something rotten's happening right behind that wall that's seeping through those bricks.
On the intermediate school?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but that was because somebody got away with something. So you have to have, yeah.
Like Al told you tonight, they corrected it. Same architect built Plitten five years later, and they corrected those mistakes.
But not ours, right?
No. But they learned from our mistakes.
Well, that's sad. So let's not give him more mistakes somehow, some other.
So those are, those are avenues that we're correcting, you know, soon.
Right. But is it free to correct them?
But it's costing us money.
Big money, right? All right. So that's what I'm saying. So be careful. If you're trying to save a buck, are you saving a buck? Is the new school the way to go? You'll be less interruptions for the kids. You're going to have people that won't send their kids to high school because there's building going on. You've got to look at the big picture, because like the superintendent, he's gone. But you, what do you do to the kids that are in the school? Do you shuffle them around? What if one kid gets hurt? You know, you've got to really be careful. You're dealing with a product. You're dealing with North Branford's future. Those students, if educated properly, will progress, and we do have great students usually. Rose, when she was on the Board of Ed, you know, we always had great students in this town. They come back here to live. They add to the community. But if you shortchange them now, they don't become a good product. It's like keeping fresh fruit on its shelf too long. It's not, it's not good. So when you're making a big decision, it's not just a dollar sign, it's the future of North Branford. And we're dragging so many anchors from the past. I mean, that's just what I put down now, but it's just, you just, you just go, no, not another problem. And so I just, I tell them, I talk about the square can. It's time to put the round can there and give it a kick and let it go. And that has to happen in November, and you have to feel good about it. We'll support you, whatever your decisions you make, because you're trying to do what's best for us. We know that. And I'm so glad, like I say, not to see the party lines. It makes me comfortable to come here, and you're all looking for the same thing from different angles. But I, like I say, and it's not an insult, it's just a comment, the history, the history that this town has haunts us. We've got too many skeletons back there, and we don't need them again.
Yes, you may.
Way back. So again, I'm an old grouch, but I'm an old grouch because I've seen it, and I've seen it, and I've felt it, and I've, and I don't want to see it again. I really don't. So whatever decision you make, I'm fine with it, because it's going to be a hard decision. I suggest build as new, because it's new. I, and it won't affect the students as bad as trying to rebuild what are in it, because I just think that's not a good learning environment. I mean, I just don't see it. And MBIS is a total nightmare. It was while it was being built, and to this day, it haunts us. We don't need another one of those. So, sorry, but that's the way I see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Potter.
Thank you.
Okay.
Shadman.
Diane.
I'm sorry.
Yep. S H A D M A N. Keith?
Oh, Keith Shadman.
Thank you. Dina Minjion Falconi, Falcioni, I'm sorry.
Falcioni.
Yep. Going, doing the best for the kids of this town is not giving them new windows and bathrooms. These kids need more. If your house was crumbling around you, you'd find it beneficial to do a bathroom remodel. Lipstick on a pig. Julie Pike Shadman, actually just, I'm sorry, that was just a reply to someone else. Brandy Snedeker Little, go Anthony. Brandy, again, make a decision. And back to Dina, how are we talking about missing a November fifteenth deadline on October sixth? Get your act together. You had months, and you still have, you still have over a month. That's, okay, there's more. I don't know if you want me to go through the, you don't want the responses to responses, right? You want, Liz Braun Hoskins, make the right choice, build new, there's no other option, the school is crumbling, our kids and staff deserve better. And that's it.